We keep under-spending. The last two years we've missed the budget line. Why are we still putting the same amount of money in there if we're not spending enough?
Uh, because the program needs to grow. There have been external factors such as space and affordability to do so. So I think it's a pleasure to work with you. We can get next year realistic wins.
Why?
Because we're...
Thanks. That's it. The size of the gym didn't grow.
No. Well, I'm hoping that we can work together. We need to transition to CalPac to try and get space in CalPac Gym. So we've got the opportunity to expand outside and do outside programming in addition to doing the gym during warm weather months, as well as working with some community partners that have demonstrated that a good commitment to our youth, such as Beat the Streets Wrestling or that sort of sports program.
Rob, I want to echo what Maria said. I think recreation is going very well. I do wish in the past, hopefully, get a little league program again. It's going to take time, but give it a shot. And again, I think the parks look great. I think they're going to look a little better. Their future with Pennington Park, there's still more to be done. And the maintenance, the guys that do the street stuff, they're phenomenal. They're always, always, it's all heaven's sake, right?
The char pass along.
Me too. And they like, well, waited down many times, even up so.
Something about the nature of what you are, in your project, I mean, I don't know if you're in charge, you are the one that is trying to make sure that in the park, there's some sign commanding the people to keep the trash in their trash container. People drop the trash everywhere, there's some sign in there, I mean, inviting the people to do so. So I would like to see that if this is, you are supposed to, you can put that in your book.
So we've been, my staff and the Public Works Department have been working on a better, more comprehensive trash and recycling plan. I know a few years ago, back when I first came to the city, the city got a bunch of trash and bins for private homes. And that was a huge help, I was told, in the amount of litter in the city. So one of the things that we'll be pushing this year is just additional trash and recycling receptacles, as well as signage or some sort of per-educational program in schools to hopefully get people to use it properly. Because I am with you, it's a constant source of frustration if that's not going how we like it to go.
Yeah, I know there's a lot of trash container around the park, but the people don't really use it. People are messing the park all the time. And me myself, both the park all the time, at least the Lincoln Home one, and I try to educate the people myself. I start picking things up, telling to keep our park clean, but we need to do some sign there so they can also see it and maintain it as well as it is. And as a constable woman say, I congratulate you, congratulate you as well for your job and keep going through it and take it again.
Thank you. Rob, it's an observation that I brought up at the last year. I feel the same way this year. The grant writer, I do not understand why it's in your department and not in the planning Thirty-six thousand, five hundred and ninety-three for a grant writer. That grant writer does a multitude of grant writing, which, it still confuses me why it is in your department. The street purification workers, I see them working on Broad and Dexter Street. Also, I do not understand why they are not in the public works department. My personal feeling is they should be in the public works department. Public works needs the workers. They can continue to do that work, but I don't understand why street purification work isn't that. The other point I want, you want to comment, please?
Uh, no, go ahead.
The other, as the Director of Parks and Recreations, I am greatly concerned that the major fields in our city is still not being addressed. I don't see anything in here, and I think it needs to be more clarified on Maycomber Stadium, Howard, and the other fields themselves. I heard, I wasn't invited to, but there was a press announcement at Maycomber Stadium regarding, I'm not sure if it's DEM grant or whatever. I wasn't invited, so I'm not familiar with what took place. If a clarification to the public could be made on Maycomber, because it's not being utilized, the Salt Tarlo Field, future plans on the other posso that is on High Street across from Goff Field, we're discussing, but we haven't heard anything further on. Kigginson Avenue, what are the restrictions there? These are some of the major questions I have for you to address, if not now, in the next couple of meetings. Because this is a major part of, it's a major aspect of the parks and recreation that we're really not addressing yet.
Yeah, I would just say, and feel free to jump in. Yeah, I would say that it's completely inaccurate to say that nothing is being done about the fields. This administration has put a lot of time...
I didn't say nothing was done. I said if we can clarify what is being done because we...
Sure, I'll clarify that for you. So we've applied for DEM grant funding to remediate Maycomber Stadium, or to first test Maycomber Stadium to be able to determine what needs to be done. We received, and were the highest scored application in the state for that $300,000 grant application, thanks to Derek, the grant writer you were referring to. That money is going to be, as I had mentioned, be used to test the remainder of the field because there was indication that it could be contaminated, and then be used for remediation. If all of the funds aren't spent on the remediation, then it'll be used to fix up the complexes, various items that need to be fixed, whether they're the bleachers or the announcement booth, et cetera. We also were the recipient of $100,000 grant for River Island Park. Now, these are very specific grants. They're only for parks. So it's not that we can use this money for whatever we want. We have to propose what we're going to use it for, and it's specifically for park usage. And so River Island Park has $100,000 to go towards remediating the considerable amount of poison ivy that's there, turning it into an urban campground, and putting in additional features that we think will attract people to actually use it more. The planning department, excuse me, the legal department has done extensive work on 1304 High Street to try to turn that into a soccer field. We've been working with NBC because they're doing some stormwater remediation in that area, and is likely to partner with us to try to get us a stadium and help with funding if we include stormwater remediation techniques in the area. And so that's a quick update on where we're at.
We're also looking to move forward with a new field at Kigginson that may build inside the track. It hasn't been, there's no contamination there that we know. Somewhere there is the Maycomber and Salt Tarlo, but our youth teams are no longer allowed by their leave to play there because the field is such a poor condition. I agree, it's not, except for us to have here, the condition to the city. That's something that we are trying to rapidly find funding sources and renovate, but the goal is to have two, three projects up and running playable by the scrimmage.
I could only compliment those actions, but if you could provide some details on those, I haven't received them. So if you could detail where we're going with those fields, when people ask me, I can relay that information. The other aspect of all the renovations that are being done, that it should be an ongoing report regarding state and federal funds that we should be informed about and given some documentation and information. Because the grants that come in, state, federal, and other local funds, it's all part of what we do in a budget. If we're not taking money out of the city taxpayer dollars to fix something, then that money is coming from another location. We need to know those, how these all interact.
So the Director will give us a report ongoing about those fields, correct?
So when comments are made like that, we just need something concrete. Because what I don't want to do is set a false expectation and not meet that. And so if you want a quarterly update on the fields, a full, you know, description, something like that, we can do it.
Quarterly updates, that works?
At least.
Quarterly updates.
You're always welcome to stop by my office or call and ask for an update. That's not a problem. I'm always happy to explain what's going on.
I think part of your monthly report, or even a quarterly report, we receive annual reports from the police department, from the fire department, with what is...
But not for myself, because I don't own a revenue center.
Correct. But you're still, it's still an agency of the city with substantial federal and state funds coming in. So if we get a better understanding through you of what is coming in, how we're spending it, and secondly, what you're planning in the next few years.
So the first part of that, my understanding is that we now have someone who's managing all the grants for the city. And so I would suggest that it might be more appropriate to get an overall grant report from that person, but not a real list in the planning department.
Mr. Lusay, you all set? I mean, are you getting...
I have a lot more questions, but I'll answer the next, Mr. Chairman.
Do you read? Is there a second question for Rob?
No.
So as far as general updates on things like that, I would just say, just call, I think it's going to be more efficient if you have questions about that. If there's anything major, it tends to get messaged either through the executive branch of the city, or I try and send all the councilors email updates in larger batches, so I'm not...
Don't send the emails, because I never get them.
Okay. But you think it hires from like Pro Cap and Serge Jobs? Who pays them?
Those are, Pro Cap, Serge Jobs.
So besides the stuff that the city hires, and the one that's there versus that's in addition?
Yeah, so those are the 40 to 50 youth corporates we get. Some of them are fellowship corporates that are paid out of the...
Fifteen thousand.
Yeah, the youth fellowship one. But most of them, that's only 25, over the course of the entire year, all the solvent companies, programs, city housing, good cap, Serge Jobs.
Anyone else?
Almost done. All right, so my favorite topic, basketball.
Yeah.
So if I looked at the figures, right, we spent about like 3.5 on the Ralph J. Holden League last year. But...
That might be the net spend, because we get sponsorships.
Okay, yeah, because we had $7,000 in checks that came in. Seven thousand, about $5,000 sponsorship, and $2,000 for the legislative grant that we got. So what is the, what's the total? You don't have to give me that now, but I would like to know how much we spend, how many.
So the midnight fee is, is about $21,000 is the net spend or the gross spend, and the youth leave is about nine.
Twenty-one on midnight, and nine for you?
Oh, no, sorry. So about 30 between the two of them. I just have all the staff and some of the money, so that's not super budget.
And then...
So it's probably roughly 15 and 15.
And then with the sponsorships that, that's with, that's including, that's how much we spend?
That's how much it costs to operate the program.
Operate the program. So we did, Dr. 7,000 that we received in kind.
Yes.
Then how much is it, we charge the kids and adults?
Only $10 for kids. And if you just have fully, you're not...
Yep, and then we pay five. And sometimes it's free, but I was trying to say it. But we do charge the adults, so what's, and it's $50 a person, is that right?
$50 a person, or you can bring a team inside of $400, so if the 10-person team comes out for you, it's a little encouraged.
Yeah, so how much of funding from that do we get?
It depends on how many teams sign up, but we're anticipating...
Last year.
We're anticipating, last year we had 12 teams, we're anticipating 16.
No, no, but how much total money did we bring in solely from people paying?
From people paying.
The participants?
I can get you that.
You can get, yeah, okay. And then my last question. In terms of like success for programs, right, like, you know, as, through the district, we're surveying all the students this year over the summer. How do you assess if programs are going well? Or like, do you evaluate, monitor, as well?
So this is something that we've talked about in the summer planning meetings that we have, because it was primarily just participation numbers. You know, we have the administration asking to have more comprehensive metrics. We've been working with researchers from the Brown Oxford School of Medicine to do a more comprehensive study on positive, hopefully the positive effects of participation in summer programs at Central Falls on preventing summer reading loss and summer waking. Those were piloted last year. The study is continuing this summer. I'm hoping to have some preliminary results in the near future on that. Otherwise, yeah, we mostly track participation numbers, and then we survey participants at parents at the end of our programs to try and get feedback, which you can quantify at a small level. General feedback is pretty positive.
But it would just be good to have something substantial, right? Like, it doesn't take, I know you talked about capacity, like, it really doesn't take that, that much capacity for you to do a survey, right? Like, you have all the...
Not a survey, something more comprehensive.
It's like an exit survey for all the events, right? Like, even if it's quick, circle, 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 but for us to have very little, like no data, I think that that says something. So I would request, even for salsa nights, have a little, do a little card like that, you know, that says, how was this event?
We offer, we have feedback cards at salsa nights that we get feedback from those who want to hear the chat of us. And we get...
Thank you.
That's it, Rob. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman.
Keep up the good work.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. If he can answer that tonight, or if he's coming back, I have...
Are there questions, or do you want to know of his programs?
What was his question?
First of all, in your, in the revenue statement, there is a line item that is miscellaneous staining grants. Is any of those funds for your department? There's $27,000, $75,000. Are any of those funds in the revenue account? No. Are there any accounts in the revenue that reflect any funds coming in for the recreation, for recreation department?
No.
No funds whatsoever?
No.
Are we looking to add a line item as we suggested? If we're getting state or federal money coming in, they should be reflected in the revenue account, while also assert separate line items.
So we're sort of using the term state and federal loosely. I just, so the state has a definition of what, of aid and whether it's distress or whether it's hotel. So when you say state and federal, I think this bucket, that bucket is strictly from the governor's budget in terms of what goes to each community. If there's applications for funds to offset expenses, those are after the budget's done. But you know, we could, just like with the after-school, there's no forward knowledge of how much we're going to offset the basketball league with something, or it's a, that's why, that's why typically the execution of that activity happens within that bucket, so that the expense is hit, and then whatever comes in is offset that directly, because it's not, again, state aid in terms of from the state budget, even though it might be some Rhode Island, you know, association that, you know, gives that money.
So... So the only things that get money consistently from are the reimburseings for the summer program. I can find what that number, I don't know where I dropped my head, but I can find what that number was from last year. And the last one is the only thing we charge for, and I, like I told earlier, I can get that number as well.
But are we getting money coming in?
So we do have grants.
$110,000 last year.
Yeah, as I mentioned, I think...
Where is that shown? As in the revenue account? That's what I refer to. If we're getting money coming in, it should be shown in the budget. If we're expending funds to repair certain things, then those expenses should be shown. There should be a reciprocal account, if we are getting federal or state or even money coming in in any avenue, and we're spending money in that department, which is coming from those funds, it should be allocated that way.
So this seems like a budget structure question that doesn't actually involve me, if I could suggest that it be brought up at a different time in your...
I'm bringing it up for your, for the finance director. We also have public events and activities. That, it's creeped up higher and higher over the years. It's $50,000. Could you give us a breakdown on what those funds actually...
Next meeting, we're done with boxing. We're over.
You heard that?
Very nice to meet you.
But I asked that question 30 minutes ago.
Tom, you're getting redundant here.
But I need, if you could break that down, and how much, and what is you're looking for to spend in the coming budget? So to clarify even further, the...
Point order, because we keep hearing the same thing over and over.
You're getting redundant, Tom.
I asked a similar question, yes. Yes.
Two or three questions, I've already had them. Thank you very much.
Are we going to have an opportunity to ask Rob any further questions later? Because I do have other questions later. We're all done with him. We cannot ask him any further questions.
Don't be asking, if the question was very important, you would have asked it, or listened to the other questions that were being asked.
I'm going down the list.
Councilman, my door is always open, so if you have any calls, you're having us. Thank you.
Can I ask one last question then? In the budget itself, you have a lot, miscellaneous recreation, $7,000. It shows a negative balance of 18, so that means you spent 88, 18. And in what way? Just clarification on that line item.
I'll have to listen up, but I'm...
Is it over the budget by 18? And that adds up much, or...
Yeah, well, I can get the answer to that and some of that with the other information that's in the question.
Thank you, Rob. Good evening, Dr. Fine. Thank you for your patience once again. Again, Dr. Fine. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to mention briefly about the structure. Last year, the Office on Health was embedded within the fire department. This year, to sort of make it more transparent, so everyone sees, you know, the Office of Health, we separated it. Now, you know, it's just a preference thing, but I just wanted to point that out, the difference from that.
Sorry, I just also want to add to note that although it was, although there is no 18, there's been no difference besides the, in fact, that person didn't even get a cost of living increase. So I was going to say the only difference was the color, but that's not even true for that person. So these were the expenses for FY18 that were in the fire department. Yeah, so I just want, this is not an increase. This is just separating from the fire department. It's the exact same number that was covered in fire. I just wanted to clarify that once.
Yep, and actually, just to add on to that, actually, the actual only difference, and let me correct me if I'm wrong, is that there's a decrease in the Office of Health line item. That is the actual only change from the budget last year. And Dr. Fine, you may speak a little bit about that, but that's, that's literally the only change for the Office of Health.
Your card, where is it?
If you're looking at this, it's on page... It doesn't have page numbers, but it's the, oh yeah, it's the last, second to last page. At the bottom, it says Office on Health, and continues on to the last page.
Thank you. For your...
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the council. It is a great honor to appear before you. I am incredibly proud of the work that the Office on Health has done in the last year. And I am also fond of saying that I have the best public health job in the state of Rhode Island and maybe in the nation. We've focused on three or four major items over the last year in terms of our work. One is on working with EMS and with frequent users of EMS in particular. And I'm proud to report that in so far in 2018, we've reduced EMS runs by frequent users of EMS by 50, that's five zero percent. It is, we reduced total EMS use in 17 over 16 by about 5%. We think that number would have been greater if Memorial had closed, which changed, apparently changed EMS utilization fairly significantly. In order to support that, the Office on Health staffs a weekly multidisciplinary team that is the envy of every community in the state of Rhode Island. We now have five imitators around the state, but ours is the best and the most highly developed team. And we do, I think, a real yeoman's job, keeping our eye on the residents of Central Falls who are at highest risk and getting them well taken care of. We first get people housed, and we get them primary care, and then we get them into mental behavioral health treatment, and it's the substance use treatment where appropriate. Second major focus of our work is on teen pregnancy prevention. Our teen pregnancy rate decreased 24% in 2016 over 15. It jumped up a couple of percent in 2017, but moved in terms of the age of the young women, predominantly high school age women, to predominantly women who are 16, over 18 and 19. And we are working hard on strategies to address the pregnancy, the adolescent pregnancy rate in that group. And finally, the other major focus of our work is on substitution disorder prevention and treatment with the Substance Disorder Prevention and Treatment Task Force. We began in 2017 and will continue into 2018, a process by which we visit the homes and the neighborhoods where there has been an overdose, and bring information to those neighborhoods about treatment and Narcan and other kinds of treatment options for people to, in order to prevent the substance use. And it's really, and we don't have numbers to prove that it's effective yet, but it is groundbreaking. It's public health intervention called contact tracing that no one else in the state is doing yet. So I think we're doing pretty good work. And we are the only community I know of in which everyone who has given us a phone number and has had an EMS run gets a phone call 72 hours later and sees what they're doing, and see if there's anything they need, and to see if they've got a primary care clinician. So that we then connect them to primary care clinicians, so they don't have to rely on 911 unless they really need it. And that's particularly significant, because we believe 50 to 75% of our EMS runs could be well taken care of in an urgent or primary care environment, and in a community that really has more than EMS, now has to run further outside of the city, reducing the number of runs for things that could be taken care of some other way becomes most important.
Just have a Jonathan, questions for the Dr. Fine?
Dr. Fine, thank you for your presentation. We spoke a little bit about this earlier, but I was hoping you could speak a little bit more towards ideas for the one-stop recovery center. What are some funding options that we have? What are the things that we can do to try to get this going?
Thanks, Freddie. It's a great question. We've submitted four or five grant requests... We've submitted four or five grant requests to fund the one-step treatment center, which we think will cost about a hundred fifty thousand dollars a year and will include prevention, recovery support, treatment with Suboxone and twelve step and needle exchange. It's a kind of unique approach that really brings all the substance use disorder services in one place. We've been unsuccessful so far in getting it funded, but we turn over every rock we can think of to try to fund it because we think this is a breakthrough approach. So we keep looking for grant opportunities and for any opportunity that would let us, that would let us tap into a funding stream that would have it up and running as soon as we can get it up and running.
Is there another reason why the Office of Health was moved from the fire department because the one chief of staff made it?
Yeah, no, we thought that it was just a little bit clearer for everyone, so we just separated it. We can put it back, it really didn't matter to us, but we thought it was just a little bit more clear for people, just separated it.
Hi, Dr. Fine. In terms, I'm interested in this Central Falls community health plan, so I'm going to speak a little bit on that. And I also wanted to know, in that, the middle schools are going to be included, because I think the Blackstone Valley, the health center at the high school, that's gone a long way, and I think that's really helped the students a lot, and I think that can still be done at the middle school as well. And also the reentry campus right across the street, are you, are you working with them at all?
So we're now working with the reentry campus. Though that's clearly an opportunity. We are working with the middle schools. And as I understand it, kids in the middle school can come to the school-based health clinic at the high school. Just the mechanics of doing that, you know, it's a little variable, but some of that depended on, or has depended on our ability to have a Vista volunteer coordinate that movement back and forth. And Vista, in its wisdom, restricted the action of the Vista volunteer this year from direct service to what they call capacity building, which has kind of handcuffed us a little bit. But we are back in discussions with Vista about trying to get people who can do direct service again. One of the things that I'm quite proud of is we've been able to have a Vista program as part of the Office on Health now for two years and have recruited through that three Vistas. So we've got fairly substantial kind of service.
The health plan?
Oh, the Green Health Plan is our work for the summer. We've got a couple of interns and we want to think out, you know, we want to go through and identify all the public health indicators that are specific for Central Falls that we can identify. It's a little tricky because we have a relatively small, what's called denominator. The population isn't big enough to be able to make real conclusions about things like infant mortality, which requires a somewhat bigger denominator. But the things that we can identify, we want to identify, figure out how we compare to other communities and where we are not the best in the state. We want to create a plan to get us to be the best in the state. I don't know if you've ever seen our substance use disorder dashboard, but it is the one that everybody else wants to imitate. We want to take that approach and bring it to the rest of the public indicators that apply to the city of Central Falls.
Then when will that be done?
Hopefully by the end of the summer.
Thank you.
Question I have, Dr. Fine, what is the target date for the grand new health clinic?
We believe, I promise that the Central Falls Neighborhood Health Station should open in September or October. I don't know if you've been by the, you know-
Amazing, yeah, how fast they, since they put the iron out, they-
Drive, drive, you know, one afternoon driving to the parking lot. Walls are going up, the roof is going up.
That iron works out, they do.
Yeah, we got cranes in the sky.
Crane, that's right. We're gonna have cranes in the sky.
Well, hopefully they'll stay on the ground. Crane, crane to the sky. Michael?
Hello, Dr. Fine, how are you?
Good, how are you?
That would be amazing to see that that center opening in September or October. That's the stage I was just great.
The one thing I will tell you about the neighborhood health station that's really exceptional, is the only place I've ever heard of in the United States that is tooled up to care for the entire population of City of Central Falls. Anybody who wants to use it will be able to use it.
It's great, great. So we can see that happen. So Office of Health, which is your office, right, how many people do work with you and what do you do to help the youth for the prevention of pregnancy and abuse of assistance?
So we have one full-time employee, and then we do everything we can to invent other folks to work with us, which means we get interns from Brown and else, from Brown and Rhode Island College. You know, we have a Vista worker who's part of that. And little by little, we created a bunch of people who are interested and work together to really do things like create the presentation I gave you a couple of months ago. I've got a little team of people who are fantastic. I don't know how else I can describe it. In terms of pregnancy prevention, the major impact or our major ability is the neighborhood health stations, school-based health center in the high school, which makes family planning options available to kids in the high school. For what we're gonna do going forward is we are finding ways of finding young women who are eighteen and nineteen and have graduated from high school. We know that about a hundred of those are not involved in primary care. And so we hope to get someone who, a community health worker, to basically call them up and get them to understand what their options are and to come and visit Blackstone or some other place so that they can get their, they can, they can do family planning in a way that allows them to choose when they want to start their points, so that they're not surprised and that they don't find themselves pregnant at an age when they might do well to be in college or going graduate school.
Thank you so much. My apologies.
Thank you, Dr. Fine. Dr. Fine, a few years ago, we had no Office of Health. Then we had an Office of Health with an allocation of thirty thousand dollars. My understanding, was that for, solely for you or was that for someone else also?
I don't think that had specific amendments attached to it. It was to backstop some of the work we've done, that we've tried to grant fund wherever we can. And we've been reasonably successful with that.
Now we have a, a new Office of Health with an allocation from zero a few years ago to thirty thousand and this year eighty-four thousand, three hundred and thirteen. You've stated that there is a great deal of work that's being done. How is that duplicitous or is it exclusive from the Department of Health or other state or federal agencies? Could you explain some of the differences?
Wait, there is no duplication. Hopefully, I think duplicitous means not telling the truth, but I like to think we're telling the truth about this. But from the perspective of duplication, the Department of Health has no boots on the ground. Rhode Island is one of six states in the nation that doesn't have local health departments. So all the Department of Health can do is put up bullet boards and beg or can send money places. And so they have no way to do the programming that we are doing in the city of Central Falls. There is no one to think about helping people understand how to use emergency services appropriately. There was, there is no one to reach out to kids in the high schools and help them understand what their family planning options are. So there is no duplication whatsoever. Sometimes we've been able to get some grants from the Department of Health, but outside of that, no duplication.
Now, you mentioned that you have, there is one full-time employee. How many employees does the Office of Health have? You mentioned one full-
One.
Strictly one full-time.
Strictly one.
And I assume that would be yourself?
No, I'm a-
Who is that?
That, that's Deb Navarro, who's a community health worker.
Where is she?
She's in City Hall. She has an office downstairs, which is called the Department of Health, the Office on Health.
Where is that? I need to familiarize.
It's right as you walk past the city court's office on the left.
Echo that.
After that.
Used to be the canvas office. I thought that was recognized for you.
So both Tracy and Deb are house officials.
Okay, so I would assume, Doctor, that expenses on health for social security and Medicaid, they pension are all hers.
Are all hers.
Okay, then there is another line item of fifteen thousand dollars. Could you explain what that is?
Well, that is money that we use to backstop some of this other work. Everything we do, we try to grant raise, we try to grant fund if we can, but some of it is not grant fundable. So things like we're starting a high school health ambassador program in the high school. It looks like we're gonna have eighteen kids this summer learning to be health ambassadors. And we're hoping to be able to give them plenty of stipends in order to keep them committed and occupied over the summer. So we want to use some of our funding for that. Our interns have, we want a stipend. We're looking to do some of this work in outreach to community health worker, in outreach to young women who are eighteen and nineteen. That, which we have hoped to grant fund, but it looks like if we're gonna make happen, we'll need to do as a contract. Those are the kinds of things that we're gonna use that money to, that's what we're gonna use that money for.
If you, you're talking to us in the city council, but to the taxpayers. From three years ago, there was no Office of Health. Then last year was a thirty thousand dollar allocation. From thirty thousand dollars, Doctor, to eighty-four thousand, three hundred, with the plans for the future, could you just explain what, what enormous benefits that we're going, the residents of Central Falls is going to be receiving?
So I just want to clarify something. Deb was in the fire department salaries last year, and so this budget is actually being reduced. Last year, so last year, Deb, you know, we had it inside fire department. Deb was part of the fire department salaries. Office on Health's spending line was thirty K. This year, we said, you know what, that, that doesn't look good, we're just separating it all, and Deb's there and Office of Health is actually being reduced by fifteen thousand. So that's, so there's an additional-
And separate.
So, but, but to directly address the benefits, in terms of reducing the number of EMS transports, particularly by frequent users, and hopefully to continue to reduce the number of EMS transports, that means that our one EMS vehicle will be available on-site to the city when it is now often running out of the city. And, and that's particularly painful because those, many, too many of those runs are for medical situations which never needed EMS and doesn't need an emergency. And, and hopefully, as time goes by, we'll reduce the wear and tear on the, on the vehicle because we reduce the total number of runs that we need to make. So that's one thing. Want to turn it into dollars and cents from a pregnancy prevention perspective, if we are effective and we think we have been and will, we certainly know that in 2015, there were forty-two adolescents pregnant in Central Falls. In 2016, that was twenty-seven. So that difference of fifteen girls, each of those, each of those children that, each of those pregnancies that didn't happen represent a seven or eight thousand dollars per student, per year expense when those kids get to, to school. And represent a substantial decrement in the earning capacity of the young women who get pregnant in high school. Those are tangible economic benefits and tangible social benefits which far exceed the relatively small expense that the city, the relatively small investment that the city is making in the, in the Department of Health.
Let's move on to Councilwoman Rivera. We've been sitting here waiting also for every council member to speak.
Hi, Dr. Fine. Glad to see that the pregnancy rate has dropped. And the question is, do you work at all with Noel Academy?
Oh, we do. We, our, our pregnancy prevention folks have been, you know, in contact with them. I can't really entail what they're doing, but I know that Dr. Nelkin, who coordinates the school-based health center, has spent a fair amount of time talking to them.
Thank you.
Anyone, second round, Jonathan, you go. Charlie? Done.
Thank you very much.
All sets. Thank you, Dr. Fine.
Dr. Fine? Dr. Fine, I'm not finished. Dr. Fine, could you?
You just said yes. This is it.
You said like this.
Another question, Mr. Chair.
Oh, my God.
If I don't want another question, I will let you know, Mr. Chair.
Please make it relevant.
Dr. Fine?
Dr. Fine, you were saying dance again.
You discussed the new health facility that's being built. Unfortunately, I wasn't invited to your topic or ceremony, but would you include me on your next list? Could you incorporate how that facility is going to be a financial, it's going to be not a financial, but a, just a social benefit to the city? I believe it is, but could you elaborate on that for us? What is it going to include in there for the services to the residents?
So services, urgent care, primary care, dental care, mental behavioral health care and substance use disorder, some substance use disorder referral and treatment. Ninety percent of the health-related services needed by the people of the city of Central Falls in one place, inside Central Falls, employing as many Central Falls residents as possible.
Excellent. Could you elaborate on the physical structure of the-
This is it. There's also the budget-related items.
Yeah, if it's not running into the budget.
This is, now you're talking about the physical plan.
What are you tearing down? What are you retaining?
No, that's not part of the budget.
Part of the whole facility.
No, 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 no.
Going to organize a business. In the time we have to-
That's a simple question.
Why don't you visit, visit the facility?
I'd be very happy if I get invited.
We would be, I'd be happy to give you a tour of where we're at.
There you go. You got invitation, I'm trying to remember. Thank you, Dr. Fine.
Council president and council members, with your permission, I'd like to ask to see if we can just move the order around because Lynn and I are gonna be here the whole night. And since we have HR and legal-
Sure, absolutely. We're in touch. They're in touch. Same way.
Good evening. Uh, tracking. HR. Legal. Hi. So we're on separate.
Good evening, tracking.
Hi, good evening.
So we group HR and legal into the same sort of half-hour estimated block because they both have very small budgets.
I have very small budget and besides that, almost any change from my budget. I just want to start saying that we are so proud that we achieved more of our goals from last year than the, the one that we didn't achieve it. We are working on that. So because we are working hard, totally, I don't know, and we are, we are based in our department, we are, we had a recommendation from the health prevention because we, thanks to the work smart, we decreased our claims from I O B and workers' comp. So we- So, did you want to see, I have a copy of the recognition?
It's all right. It's all right?
No, I got that copy. Okay, so-
I'd like to see it. You'd like to share? There's the-
That's the recognition, that's our goal. And that's a copy of the, of some of our recommendations. And I just want to say that, as we said last year, that we're gonna be running two wellness programs by the House. We did more than that, like, more than five. And they were very well attended. And I am here to answer any questions. My only change in the budget is that we want to increase our educational training line, two thousand dollars, because we're gonna be using to our wellness program events. This current fiscal year, we use the Worksmart funds because we achieved our goals. So we receive like five hundred every quarter because we achieved our goals. But this year, because we are doing so well, we're gonna be exiting from the program. So we want, we love to have those two thousand dollars to continue running our programs. And I am here to answer any questions from the budget.
Thank you, Chair. Councilman Casper? Any questions, please? I want another time.
Well, so, so one of the, one points that I just wanna make is that HR and legal share a employee. And very closely, they, they work together. And so that's why, that's one of the reasons why we also put them together. So what do you wanna hear them, you know?
They're separate.
Yeah, it doesn't. Okay?
Ms. Panha, thank you for your presentation. I just have a question. I don't know if it would be related directly to the funds that you need, to the budget, or to something else, but I know that we had issues with single points of failure this year, particularly in the finance department. What, if anything, is the HR department doing to, to address that so that it doesn't happen again? And is it a budget need? Is it a human capital need? Or is it something we're waiting to hear back from consulting that will be supplemented by budget?
Len can probably speak a little bit more about the financial aspects, but it is a consultant that we have working with the finance department on what those, how to address those points of failure.
So budget-wise?
Yep.
Does this come from the HR department's budget paying for this consultant? Is this from the finance department, is this from the executive?
There's a, there's a slight increase in the-
I'm sure we'll-
Sorry. There's a, in the professional services line of finance, there's a slight increase of six thousand dollars. And that's to cover an estimate of the impact of both the auditor consulting side and drive that piece of, of what they're helping us with in terms of process improvement, which we've already implemented some things. At some point, probably in the next two months, there'll be an update to council in terms of, you know, what's the short-term stop that we've done, and then what's gonna go on going forward.
Thank you. So those two thousand dollars, something we got, oh, is that, you just mentioned it's just for education and training, right? What kind of training and who takes this?
That's for our wellness program. Last year, last, this current fiscal year, twenty eighteen, we had the opportunity to run some programs for the employees. Like, we went to bowling, we do softball. And that's a little thing that can encourage together. So that's kind of programs that we want to keep in running. And also, we did doing the summit, we did like outing program. And so we invite the families from the, from all the city, all, all the employees. To get, they together, and we do a cookout, and all those kind of things. And also, we do the working challenge, and the watchouts.
So, if I can just elaborate on that. So what Jackie's referencing is, the trust, our insurance provider, had a program called Worksmart Twenty-One, which gave us incentives and opportunities to reduce our claims, to be healthier, to do a variety of things. With small incentives and community building and educational opportunities. And so now that we are completing that Worksmart Twenty-One program, those incentives that have been offered by the trust for people to participate, it is going away essentially. And so we feel this is a great opportunity. We, we were able to reduce our claims. So even though the Worksmart program, Worksmart Twenty-One program is completing, we want to keep those initiatives going because we saw the benefit firsthand.
Thank you for your information.
Councilwoman?
Thanks, Ashley. So, I have two questions. In Workers' Comp, HR, and then testing. Well, just, let's just look at Workers' Comp. So on the budget?
Yes.
On this budget that we got, it says, as of three thirty-one, it's a hundred and five thousand. But on this budget, it doesn't say that. So which one is right?
Right, so how, so in FY eighteen and how we budgeted, we budgeted them in the groups, in police and fire, and in personnel. We just haven't split that out in actuals yet. So if you look at the March ending, ninety-nine percent sure police and fire says zero. That's what that, the number, yeah. So it's just a, it's just a, I don't, I don't think I mean a newly allocation the way, the way City used to do it, if that makes sense. So it's just a matter of placement of the expenses. I budgeted it in the back to where it belongs. And we're talking about how to make those adjustments so that by the end of the year, those things will be split out.
But for this, for this passage, for the budget, will it be fixed?
Well, the budget is.
And this?
The budget is. But that part of the board, it's not gonna have to be. It wouldn't have to be, but it will be submitted. It'll be fixed by the time, let's forget this one. You'll get, you'll get a monthly report that has that fixed.
Okay.
I just don't know what month it, once we get past what we're doing. It certainly depends on obviously, make that adjustment. Those numbers come by from the trust, sorry.
And then for the testing, HR, we, we, in fiscal year seventeen, we spent five thousand over that. So are we gonna run into the same issue? I mean, this year, we haven't, we haven't spent that much. So will we have an issue with the testing?
Well, the testing is for, for the promotion of this, for fire, and police, and psychological. No, I don't think that we don't have to do this one here.
Yeah, so those are, if I can chime in. So those are both fixed costs for union testing that has to be done. But then there's also some variables about when we do our hiring process for-
And testing?
Yeah, our, our hiring process for, excuse me, police and fire. How many we send for psychological tests, which cost a decent amount of money. And if they fail, then we might have to send another one, and that sort of process. And so we believe that this is going to be an accurate number.
Thank you.
That counts on the practice?
Yeah. Jackie, I just wanna, congratulations for that recognition that you have received in your department. And you kicked on a good, that will work in the city.
Councilwoman Rivera?
Hi, Jackie.
Hi, Councilwoman.
Jackie, some of my questions have already been answered on that. But I do have a general question regarding this past year and looking at coming year. A lot of the funding goes into training, goes into new hiring, new hirees. How many recruits have we, have we trained and lost on the police and fire departments? And how many have we had to replace? And what do you foresee in the coming year? My understanding, there's been a lot of transition of people coming on and leaving. And then we have to go out and rehire again, so. What is that trend this year, or what do you suspect in the future?
Right now, we're gonna be sending two police, two for, for the police academy. And we're gonna be, and we have one that is gonna be graduated next Friday. And for the fire department, I, we're gonna be sending another, two candidates for the fire department. And we just hired one last week.
So to answer your question sort of more specifically, so I'm highly involved with, with this process. So I, I sort of have those numbers for police. Unfortunately, we had one candidate out of the several that we've sent in recent history that failed the agility portion and the use of force training. So that, that's one for police in, in the past two years. Or practically, probably longer than that. And then for fire, we have one that we trained and then ended up leaving to another department. And then one who had failed the cardiac testing. So they were hired under, under our hiring initiative. You can apply without necessarily having all the certifications, but you have to get the certifications within a certain timeframe. That timeframe was actually too short. And the individual did not pass, although he had other opportunities to pass, after the one-year timeline. And so, take, long story short, one on fire had failed, but he ended up taking the test again. We hired this time, and we hired him back. And so if you consider that a wash, we've had one from police and one from fire. And we've also made a change to the ordinance that Councilman Solano had, well, it was Stephanie that sponsored it, Councilman Solano proposed the amendments. And it was just a lengthened that from one year to get all of your certifications to a year and a half. Just because we noticed that it was a little bit too short, to get everything.
Jackie, just one other question on the fire and the police. I know we hired female firefighters. My understanding, they left. Do we have any female officers on the fire department as of now?
Unfortunately, not.
No. What about the police department? Have you hired any additional? And how many female do we have on the police?
The police department, we have like four.
Yeah, we have approximately four or five. And we hired Stephanie Ruano recent, recently. So I would consider her, you know, in the last two years, one of our new hires.
Everybody go on again. I have it.
That's it? You said one more question to Jackie.
Yes.
Well, no, she said she was all set.
Yeah, Maria's all set. And everyone else is all set. So we're back, I think we're back to the-
One, one additional question now. Jackie, do you have, do you handle the all hiring or also contractual hiring? Are you involved with the hiring of the police chief, the fire chief, and other contractual employees such as the solicitor? And I'm not sure who else is under contract. Is that through your department?
It's not all, all of the department, yes.
Are you presently negotiating any contracts with the police, fire?
It's not nothing to do with the budget?
It is part of the budget.
Wow.
Your salaries are all part, it's through her department.
Under contract, they're all-
It's on the contract.
It's not under contract, the answer is no, Councilwoman.
There's no, no negotiations with it?
There's budgets built on approved CBAs, approved contracts. There's nothing, there's nothing-
And there's no negotiations.
My understanding is the, the, do we have a continuing contract with the police and fire chiefs? Or has their contracts ended? I'm just asking.
The contracts have ended.
The contractors have ended. Are we renegotiating those contracts, or have they? I'm not sure-
No, they're operating without a contract.
They're operating without a contract?
Yes.
As are all other directors.
Just like all the other directors.
All discussed with all the directors later. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, please, thank you so much, Jackie, and thank you for your patience. I believe City should listen to us. Up next?
Mr. Chair, can I ask for recess just for five minutes?
Go ahead. We recess for five minutes. Anyone else? I was a tired person. Hi. Rather than it's three o'clock. Yeah, it's like City, so it's, oh, hi.
So that's for Asher?
I just need to make sure to tell you something. Like after, the lady she did that, and I don't see how she had it.
Talk to me self, so. You're looking for, you're looking for- You're welcome here. It's free. It's a big rush.
No, he said the police and fire are separating.
We got a long one ahead of us here.
Okay. Councilman Figueroa had a good idea. We're gonna take a lane next, because Matt-
We're gonna take a lay next, because Matt's gonna be here the rest of the evening anyways. Good evening, all right?
Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, just can I ask which line items does your department cover in your discussing tonight?
So, it is starting on page thirteen, where it says highway code. Continues on to the next page, and continues under public works.
It's a total, back, total, we call it, sort of, uh... We split it up this year.
Highway code and public works?
This year, we split it up.
What about city properties?
City properties, city clerk.
All right, there's nothing in the city property that you're gonna be covering?
No.
I just want to clarify.
City properties never been on the highway.
I just wanna make sure we're not duplicating things.
Okay, um, as you know, public works covers a myriad of duties, and in public works, we focused our attention on the aesthetics of the city and maintaining the infrastructure. We work closely with the recreation department to maintain all the parks and to be there for their functions to help with the setup and breakdown. We work with the planning department and the police department to implement traffic calming measures, and we're basically responsible for the maintenance of the city. Our budget this year is not much different from last year, so I really don't anticipate anything big. In code enforcement, we've actually focused with, on the nuisance task force to resolve issues on problematic properties. We've worked with the legal department to get houses back onto the tax rolls. I believe there's been about forty of them. And last July, we started implementing the E-system, E-parading system in code enforcement, which is a more simplified system for contractors.
And actually, I made a mistake. Inspection officers are also under, uh, delay.
That's why I was anxious.
Which is code, if you have it under code enforcement.
Yeah, but it's listed separately as.
Inspection officers.
Councilman? Thanks Elaine, appreciate you being here. I just had a question about the capital improvement fund. So, so far, we've spent sixteen thousand, six hundred seventy-four on public works, and the original DPW capital budget for this year had a hundred and fifty thousand. What are some of the other projects that you expect to complete by the end of this year, seeing as we don't have any money allocated for the capital fund for DPW next year?
Uh, what I'm hoping to do is to possibly do some more sidewalks, but we're coming to the end of the fiscal year, which is gonna be pretty tough. And we were also hoping to fix the issue out front with the sidewalk being raised. If you come up the front steps, which is a dangerous situation, the trust actually talked to us about it, and we would provide the manpower and the materials would come out of the capital fund.
Okay, thank you. Here you go. How are we doing with recycling now? I know last time you say it was...
Recycling, we're actually about twenty-one and a half percent. At one point, we were higher, but we seem to be having an issue with recycling. One of the things of my, one of my goals was to actually go to the schools, and I did do that with Wilder at the high school for a couple of classes, but somehow, we need to get the word out about recycling. We're still up there where we can get a rebate, but it's not as good as it should be. But we're higher than most communities.
Yeah, I know, but before, we were higher.
We were at twenty-four.
Yes.
We were at twenty-four percent.
Do you have any ideas, or how can we help you to, you know, so?
Well, we need to get the word out. That's one of the most important things. One of the things, I think, is people really are unsure about recycling because resource recovery keeps changing the rules. One of the biggest issues that happened was you can't put plastic bags in the recycling bin. So, people would put their stuff in the bag, throw it in the bin, but we didn't find because it jams the machines at resource recovery. So, I think people are getting lazy, and they're just throwing it in their trash.
I noticed that, I went to check my progress, and I always remove, you know, paper, and also, um, the boxes, the pizza boxes?
Pizza boxes, yeah.
Yeah, they used to throw down.
If they're, if they have grease on them, you can recycle.
Everything is greasy, yeah, I know.
If they're not greasy, you can recycle. They're just nitpicky, and what's happening is people, I think, are either getting confused or lazy.
I would say the box has something to do.
About ninety percent of my.
It's like pizza, yeah.
Sorry. I'm sorry, Elaine.
Thank you, Elaine. On that note, though, Calca, we, we had a recycling week, so get the word out, kids don't know.
They're gonna need one, too.
Yep. And, okay, so, under public works, both solid waste removal and trash removal, recycling, those, we still have, uh, does that money come out at the end of the year?
No. The solid waste removal and disposable is the tipping fees, and what that is, is the bill every month. We get a bill every month for resource recovery for tipping fees.
For the solid waste and the trash removal?
It's the solid waste.
And that's going up, isn't it?
Yes, and the tipping fees are going up. For twenty-five years, they were thirty-two dollars a ton. In twenty seventeen, they went up to thirty-nine fifty, and this year, beginning July, they're going up to forty-seven dollars a ton.
Whoa.
Well, it's a good job.
And then, in terms of trash removal, there's still a decent amount of money in that. Will that get exhausted?
Yes.
Sure.
Yep?
Yes.
Hi Elaine.
Hello.
My heads off to what your department does with the manpower you have. Five biggest issues in any city, obviously, are taxes, snow removal, trash, potholes, and clean streets. You have sixty percent of that as a burden, and you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Looking at your budget, only, and I always ask you this, so are we all set? I know we don't know from winter to winter with purchase of salt slash sand. You had enough last year?
For the last two years, the amount that I've been allocated has been fine.
Right, yeah. Personally, I'm happy with, with, I know, here comes the, there's snow in the forecast, and again, you've got probably the biggest burden in the city. That's, that's it, that's what people scream at. Potholes, snow removal, taxes, trash, and clean streets, and you got three of the five, and you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Hello Elaine.
Hello.
I, um, please, seeing the department really quickly to start comments, to, you know, to move the snow and to work out. Question, the question that I want to ask right now is about pothole. When they occur, occur many times, sort of, as three, not, not the city, but how to do handle this, and how, do you come around to inspect pothole and try to fix it?
I drive the city every single day, plus my foreman does. When we see potholes, what we do is make a list, and within a day or two, they are filled. Sometimes, the same day. What we try to do is use, of course, hot patch, which lasts longer than cold patch, but in the middle of winter, you can't get hot patch. So, we address the potholes as soon as we find them.
Yeah, and I know that you, I mean, move really quickly for when anything happens, even, I have called a few times to your office, I see something that's wrong, and go, I mean, sometimes, I send you a message in the morning, and the afternoon, the problem has been solved.
We appreciate those phone calls because we can't be everywhere.
Yeah, I know.
But, but we try to.
No, I know, but I know you're doing a great job in addressing the railway, which is, I mean, I very appreciate it. And I was asking, uh, Rob about the park, about the sign, that we don't have any sign in the park, you know, by the people to try to maintain the garbage and the garbage container, and, and also the recycling, the recycling second bin. Is, uh, who's in charge to try to make those signs and install it in the park?
I am.
You are?
Yes. So, I'm not sure, what kind of sign are you looking forward to?
Sign like in the park, do I mean?
Oh, please just.
Yeah, for, for the people to, I mean, be aware of the garbage they throw in the park everywhere.
We can take care of that. The problem is, you can put up as many signs as you want, and it doesn't, it doesn't work all the time.
I know, I, I, I'm doing my part too, in the park, I talk with the people about the park, they enjoy the park, actually, at least, I think, I'm, I change something to a cowl and slicing for the children, I tell them, this is our park, and we, I'll keep trying to keep it clean. The city are doing the job that they're supposed to do, but if we throw everything everywhere, it's all about, there, so I do try to empower that.
I can take care of that.
Thank you. That's me. Thank you.
Good evening, Elaine.
Hello.
Elaine, let me say that your department is, I consider, the hottest working department in the city.
Thank you.
For what you guys have to do. Let me begin my questions with staff. My understanding is, I'm not sure how many is on staff right now. My understanding, you may be losing two long-term workers in the coming budget. What are the plans for that?
Well, there's nothing locked in stone. We have one foreman and seven laborers. There's a possibility that two may go, but it's not locked in stone. Until anything's official, there's nothing in place, yes.
Just, no, they, they're at their retirement age for multiple years, so they can leave, just like other people in this city, they can leave when they choose.
Yes. Has, you've been stagnated at seven, seven laborers?
Yes, and one foreman.
And are there any plans? That is a low number to handle an entire department. I still consider it understaffed. Are there any plans for increasing that number?
Not at this point, that I'm aware of. Josh probably can answer that better than you.
I commented earlier that the Parks and Recreation Department had two street certification workers. I was confused continually over the years why they are not part of the public works department in office, but that's above my pay grade. Your budget itself, uh, the, I know the solid waste is going up, but the contract for waste removal, the contract with MG, what is it, MG?
MTG.
MG, M.
MTG.
MTG, I was getting that to step, to step up. When does his contract come up? And what is the increase in issue?
It's a two percent.
Two percent increase, when does his contract come up?
I don't know it off the top of my head. It's, it's outed now. I don't, I just, I think it, I think it was renewed already once.
Could you check on the contract?
Yes, sir.
For us? That is one of the bigger expenses in the department. Do you see, you, you still maintain a garbage truck at the garage. I see that you picked up various vehicles. Is there anything, I haven't seen a capital budget with you yet, or the other departments, I'd like to get a copy of that. Is there any special requests in capital that you would see beneficial to obtain besides more money for streets and sidewalks? What else?
Um, there's some equipment that I would like.
Like what?
Possibly another four-by-four pickup. Ours are getting old. And possibly another dump truck with a plow. Like I said, some of the equipment's aging.
Could you, right now, you've got the new building.
Councilman, could you stay on the budget? Our woman, the councilwoman Rivera, and then we'll go, and then we're gonna go around again, see if anyone else has further questions.
I, I really don't have questions, just because you've already answered two of them. But regarding the recycling, if you send us information, we can do outreach on social media.
Great, that'll be great.
As councilmembers, so just send us your information, that helps. But I, that find it really hard, and I can't really be done to educate our community as well.
Councilman Castle? I did. All right, stay well. Again, I might come in a million. Did you think, I know, it's very difficult to enforce, and, do you think people going around, they may not even be from Center Falls, I've seen Massachusetts plates flipping up the recycle bin and actually taking recycled material. In fact, there was a pickup truck from Massachusetts, a couple of months ago, and I had called, but it was too late, I think I was wrong, but does that impact at all on the recycling tonnage?
I believe it does. I believe North Providence did a study, and they were actually losing over a hundred thousand dollars a year.
Wow. We do have something on the books, but it's difficult. I know there are some people, I mean, I would go down the street, he really, I hate to say it, but he really needs it, it's just whatever he uses it for, but again, I see how the talent's come by, Massachusetts, like I said, wants the pickup truck, so. Already, so that big of an impact, wow.
I'm not sure what's in here, but.
Yeah, wow, thank you. Frank? Mr. Luzet?
Yes, Elaine.
Hopefully, your fire department.
Elaine, part of your budget, I know in last year, and again, last, this year, the listing of streets and sidewalks that you are proposing to do in your budget, I know I went to your office and spoke to you about that. What's the, do you have a list that you could distribute for people, the council people and the awards? I mean, that is something of interest. To me, people ask me, what streets being done, what sidewalks? We have no idea.
So, I actually have a list of the sidewalks, and it's, it's quite extensive because sidewalks weren't done for many years. Problem is, I, I can give you the list, but the problem is, I can't tell you when they're going to be done. I have a limited crew, and I can only do so many. For example, this past fall, we were only able to do sixteen with all our other work. So, you know, you're gonna go to a constituent and say, well, yes, you're on the list, and then they're gonna keep calling, when am I getting done, when am I getting done? It's a problem.
I have a suggestion, if you don't, for the capital improvement, we do get the sidewalk projects when they're done, maybe just listing up the street on there, right? And then, you have your end, so you can get this anymore.
I can give you the ones that were done, that I've done since, I mean, even last year.
Perfect. Yeah, they can decide it.
I believe I provided to you the ones that were done last year.
Yeah.
Do you, could you tell me which line item in your budget reflects the sidewalks and street repairs? I see road.
Well, there's road repair maintenance and no capital from the previous year. So, there's previous stuff that might have been in capital, and there's a small number of road repair maintenance, the expense line.
The road repair maintenance had an allocation in seventy, this was the year seventeen, of two hundred and twenty thousand. The audit showed they spent three hundred and eighty thousand. This year, the adopted budget was only twenty-three thousand. This coming. This coming year, the mayor's proposing $25,000. That's nowhere near the amount of money that we all have. What do you think is?
There's, there's no paving in there this year.
That's strictly sidewalks to $25,000?
No, it's, it's actually potholes, inlet stones, manhole covers and frames, whatever's needed on the roads.
So is there any money in your budget for street resurfacing?
No.
Or sidewalk repair?
He says the 25.
No.
She said that was.
Oh, it's potholes.
Right.
Yes, manhole covers, inlet stones, whatever's needed on the streets.
But no sidewalks?
If there's an emergency sidewalk, yes, but not to actually say that I'm going to do 10 sidewalks.
And?
And that's not enough, 10 sidewalks.
Right now, we have streets being done by the National Grid. Is there funds inside the budget here to cover the city's portion to do the entire street?
Good question. Nothing, no.
Nothing in here?
So, one of the things that I think is also important to know, if I can just jump in, is that the reason, Len, correct me if I'm wrong, but the reason 2017 was 200, uh, 200,000, 220,000 was that we're also budgeting Wyatt money in there, the 200,000 allocation between, uh, from Wyatt. And we said any money that comes from Wyatt goes right into there, we'll be able to do more streets and sidewalks and anything sort of with roads.
So Wyatt's at that, it was only 20.
But you spent 380.
Correct.
Right, and so what I'd also say is that, obviously, last year, we told the council that we, we decided not to budget that Wyatt money because it was unstable and we didn't want to get ourselves into a, into a difficult situation, but I believe it's all intentions that if any Wyatt money does surface, it goes right back to them.
Rivera? Any further questions?
Just thank you, every time I call, every time I constitute, I call you Venus or Vera, it gets resolved right away. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Luzzia, just please stick to the budget.
Elaine, in your budget, you have traffic signals, $3,000, which is standard. Presently, we have traffic signals that are not being utilized. Traffic locations were definitely changed over like this rotary or round or whatever you call it on Roosevelt Avenue, where you still have a 15 or $75,000 electrical system there. You have Washington Street, which was changed at the corner of Washington and Totten, and the lighting system there is a blinking light, not a stoplight. What do you plan to do with those fixtures?
So first of all, we need to determine if the rotary is staying there, if that's the case, if it's going to be permanent, then those fixtures would come down and go into my inventory. And I'd use it in other places if necessary.
My belief is that should be removed, the rotary. I've been against it before and was constructed, and I'm against it still. It is useless, it's a traffic nuisance, a hazard, and it should be taken. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Elaine.
Thank you so much, Elaine. Have a good night, have a safe trip home. We go to you next next week. No objection, so you'll go to the city solicitor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Oh, yeah. I'll just go over some brief things going on in Law Department last year, this year, and then go over any items in the budget that the council would like to inquire about. The, over the last year, I think one of the initiatives that our department is most proud of is that we have created a domestic violence task force to tackle the highest per capita rate of domestic violence in Rhode Island. We have worked with the police department, the Blackstone Valley Advocacy Center, our school department, and have been holding monthly meetings and literally looking at every single case of domestic violence in the city and trying to come up with solutions. We've been looping in the judiciary, we had a big event at the high school, and working on curriculums for Calcutta in the high school. We want to start young so our young people can lead the way in dealing with violence at home. Also, young people are dating and learning those tools now is really important. The, and that really, that sort of model is based on the work of our nuisance task force, which has a similar approach, and we had some pretty big successes over, in the last year, in the nuisance task force, specifically 63 Fletcher Street, which is one of the more notorious properties on the nuisance task force, will, as you probably have driven by, it is now a single-family home to duplex, there'll be ribbon cutting probably in the next month or two. Councilman Luzzia, I will make sure you give an invitation.
I should make that.
Let me.
The 606 Fletcher Street, which was next to PISA, was a notorious hangout drug house. We secured money, worked with the contractor to demolish that and working on funds to redo that property. And then two sort of infamous nuisance task force properties, 69 Pacific right over here, if you've driven by, it looks amazing, it was the definition of the bad apple rock of the bunch, and it, it just looks great right now. And 111 Headley, which is going to be a single-family home. In addition, worked with our grant writer to apply for and secure the $1 million allocation from the Blight Fund to transform the Dexter Credit Union Building into a satellite campus of Rhode Island College. In addition, worked with Derek to secure nearly $50,000 to do our census work that we're doing now.
Which organization?
The Rhode Island Foundation.
Oh, I figured something else.
They gave the city $43,000 to go door-to-door in the city to ensure that the addresses we're using for the 2020 census are updated, we want to have the best count as possible. We had a clean year with our access to public records request, so the attorney general's very active in coming after cities and towns that do not comply with requests within 10 business days, and for the fifth year in a row, we've had no complaints registered against the law department or the City Center Falls. Had over a dozen very sensitive HR matters that dissolved themselves and no, you know, a lot of the times, I would say, you can tell whether a lawyer's doing good or bad job by how many major issues you have with personnel issues, especially this year, we've seen a huge number of sexual discrimination, sexual harassment lawsuits. This is another one of those knock-on moments, we've been very carefully working with our HR department and our department directors to try and work on disciplinary action and any civil action matters. On the lawsuit front, on the proactive lawsuit front, we, as the City Center Falls, have recently filed a lawsuit against the census for them trying to add a citizenship question to the census. That is in the Southern District of New York. And then also, we filed lawsuits to stop the president's actions on DACA and on the travel ban, and on both of those, we were successful. We stopped the travel ban the first time, we stopped the travel ban the second time, we stopped the travel ban the third time, and we stopped his attempt to end DACA. Internships, we, in the last year, we've got three law school students, a college student from URI and a high school student, who many of you know, she didn't learn National Anthem a lot of times, Montero from high school. Maintaining the open data portal of all contracts, budgets, audits on the city's websites, writing ordinances, writing resolutions, criminal prosecution, housing prosecution. We sort of re-hauled our tax sale program, we had some problems last year, this year we just did a different way and went very successfully. And then I mentioned this to Councilwoman Fonseca, but she had asked about the re-entry campus across the street, and we have been working with the director, James Montero, on looking for ways to partner with the city, ensuring that people who come back to the city from prison have a path to get a job or to create pathways so they don't have to go back to prison and we can reduce the recidivism rate in the city. That's just a brief presentation, I'm happy to entertain any questions from the council.
I can point, no, Matt, you're going to cover legal and judiciary?
Sure, I can cover judiciary.
Councilman Castle.
I asked this question in private to someone else, just for the public record, I don't know if this would be more appropriate for the solicitor or for the finance department. Solicitor, it seems like your official salary changed, so you didn't follow the traditional bump, it looks like you moved from a benefit employee to a contract employee, can you speak to that as it makes up for roughly $4,000, $440 difference?
Sure, Councilman. When I started here in 2014, I committed to the mayor to reduce the law department budget by at least 15%, and that year started at $7,000 a month in, in a commitment to this council, and council members always ask me the question that if I were to bill over that amount, would I bill over the amount? I said, no, I would cap it, and I have never billed over that amount. A year and a half ago, I had, for tax purposes, my accountant had said, you're getting double taxed as an independent contractor, would the city be, you know, be able to have you as a part-time employee? And we did that for a little while, and then my accountant came back and said, actually, I think I gave you that advice. So I asked the finance department if I could go back to my contractor status, which is what I am now, which has been the same amount since 2014. I don't take any healthcare insurance, I don't, I'm on a city pension, I don't have any expenses outside of that. Thank you.
Can you please explain a little more about all the professional services legal, I see a $79,000 difference on the 2018 and 2019?
Sure, Councilman, so that is because last year I was not in that line item and this year I am. The OPS line for this year is myself, our criminal prosecutor, Nick Heeman, who is also doing our planning board, rezoning board, and our redevelopment agency, and that's $22,000 a year, and Lasek Holmes, who's our housing prosecutor, at $15,000.
That's under.
Thank you.
That's under, that's under other professional services for the law.
Thank you.
Hello.
Look, Councilman.
So, in terms of the nuisance task force, can you kind of, oh, in your, in your budget, in the book, I like that you identify all the bank-owned properties in the city and work to eliminate all vacant bank-owned property, so they can use that for all of our properties in the city?
Yes, absolutely.
So I appreciate that. So what's going on with the nuisance task force? Because in previous years, we budgeted for that, so what happens in fiscal year 19?
We have one more year of fiscal, we have one more fiscal year worth of funding to cover Bobby's salary from the original grant, so there are no city funds being used to pay for Bobby's salary. In prior years, the law department had asked for a capital expenditure for the nuisance task force, and I can tell you that for three years, we had $100,000, $100,000, and last year, $75,000. First two years, $100,000 and $100,000, both of them, the first $100,000 went to demolish 63 Fletcher, the second $100,000 went to rebuild it, and it's going to be opening this, this summer. $75,000 is being used, was used as part of the grant application to buy the Dexter Credit Union Building to bring Rhode Island College here, and that match was required by Rhode Island for us to apply for that million dollars.
Say that last quote again, for Dexter?
For Dexter, they require a city match for us to apply for that million dollars, and so that $75,000 was part of the city match. This year, I don't believe we have anything in the budget.
What do you mean?
Yeah, this year we have to ask for.
What do you mean the match, though?
The way, so the, in order to be eligible for the Blight program money, the municipality or the developer that applied for had to show certain skin in the game, and so the city's skin in the game was $200,000, which was broken down into different pots, which the law department put forward, our $75,000 nuisance money, so we could turn a vacant building into a college campus.
Can you explain the other $125,000?
I, I can't. I, I believe 25,000 is coming from the department?
Yep.
And $100,000 was coming from somewhere else, I'm not sure where.
That's a question, I was going to ask finance for that, that's a credit. I would like to know where that other $100,000, because it's not reflective in this budget, so if it's not reflective in this budget, where are we going to get the money paid?
Thank you, Matt. I commend you, that total legal is actually down this year, and you basically answered the question regarding Robert Weber, just one more year under the grant program.
Yeah, and we hope to raise more money based on the success to keep him on, not on the taxpayer side.
Because that nuisance task force is certainly definitely necessary and it has made an impact in this city, so thank you.
I have one thing, Mr. President, I'm sorry. We, there's an ordinance before the council that would allow receivership claims, so for example, 577 Broad Street, right across the street, we were able to get three developers into bidding more, and they sold, the property sold at a much higher price than anywhere in the state. So there's an ordinance before you that would allow us to use the proceeds of that sale that are in excess of what the receiver thought, to, to go into a revolving fund for nuisance task force. So you see the last item in my budget, it says nuisance task force revolving expenses. It's our hope that we bring in $50,000 worth of revenue this fiscal year, which hopefully will also help pay for Bobby next year.
I don't have, I don't know what you're referring to.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Could you clarify?
I'll clarify that.
It was, it was part of a legal request, but at the time when we, we put the budget together, it was one of those things where we felt that, we don't know we're going to bring the revenue in, going back to the other conversation earlier, I didn't want to put a line item of revenue and expense to offset each other if there was an unknown, so I'm, I, I'm a very conservative person when it comes to unknown, so once the ordinance passes, yes, so once the ordinance passes and then we have some properties to go with the, the ordinance will dictate the action for finance then, then we could separate that. I didn't want to cart before the horse thing until we get a property, get the ordinance, we're allowed to cop on some of that money, then we could separate it. And we just went and, we were a little too ahead of ourselves with the line item name, and I, I deleted it from the road just so we don't confuse everyone, which back, we just ended up doing, sorry, it's all right. It was my fault for, it was my fault for not telling that, I didn't.
My, my, I didn't see that, you were saying before that you committed the mayor and the city to reduce the expenses on your department by 15%?
That's right.
And also you think ending the city's salaries into $2,013?
Yeah, when I came on the board, the law department budget was 236, this budget before is 207.
Yeah, that's great. It's just a question, I don't know if it's updated to the board yet, but how the legal team go with the state, end the call with the state for the money that we owe to the state?
Yeah, so we've been, we've had antagonistic relationship with the state for the last several years about what we owe them for the receivership and is the city's position as reflected in the. in the resolution that this council passed at the last meeting that the bill should be substantially lower than what the state is alleging? And so the state has been trying to build the city for things like defending the stability act in court, even though that helped to socket, it helped these problems, it helped central commentary. And if the attorney general's constitutional mandate to defend any statute, they send that bill to the central office taxpayers. Because the city shouldn't have to pay that bill. So we're gonna keep litigating that in an effort to reduce the exposure as a central office taxpayer because it's about $700,000 right now that the fight is...
Do you have any idea that's gonna be solved this year?
If the legislation passes, then the matter is resolved. So that's an issue for the representative in the center as to whether they're gonna be successful in the next month.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening, Matt.
Good evening, Councilman.
Matt, in our legal department, could you explain you addressed, you're transferring your salary from an employee to a contract. So we're transferring money from the salary account to the other professional services. If that takes place, then under the salary account, what employees are covered under that account?
Sure, that's listed as...
Strictly listed.
Just listed.
Okay. And the other professional services legal, you're being transferred to be covered under that. Who else is under that line item?
There are... There are only three lawyer contractors in that line item, myself, criminal prosecutor, Nick Heeman, and the housing prosecutor, Lisette Gomes.
And that would comprise of the entire 121?
That's right.
Okay. I'm not commenting on any of the other ordinances, strictly the budget, the legal contingency account. We're reducing it. How much has been really spent in this past year? And what do you foresee, only a $15,000 need for next year?
I can give back to you... I was gonna say an email, but a little email. I'll get, I'll call you. I'll get back to you on what's been spent.
You can print a copy of it.
I don't have that in front of me right now. But the reason it was more was budgeted last year was that we had ongoing litigation with the fire department. And we did not have a contract with the police department. And so we were retaining labor counsel to assist us with arbitration with the American Arbitration Association, fire department dispatch issues, and for union negotiations with the police departments. Both of those have resolved. And so it's my hope that that number can come down this year.
Is there anything other than in the legal department that are funding aspects of the law department? Other items, other line items in the budget? You just mentioned some legal work. Did that come out of other accounts or...?
That came out of legal contingencies.
Is there anything else in the proposed budget that you would also participate in? Or money could be used in that?
The only other line item that may have to do with a lawyer, to my knowledge, is the tax sale. And the tax sale, is that a line item?
Because it's part of the finance expense.
So part of the, you know, the title services and et cetera for that is a tax sale lawyer.
My last question, and I won't go back a lot, is you normally are in your office on Monday, Wednesday, and Fridays from 9:00 to 12:00? Is that remaining your accessibility here?
My open office hours are 8:30 to 1:00 on Monday, Wednesday, Friday. But in the last few weeks, I've been here every day and I'm available, you know, seven days a week I hear. But anyone's needs, the census candidacy we've been doing has kind of been an everyday thing lately. But I'm happy to schedule meetings any day of the week.
Now, you mentioned the census.
It's the last one.
You brought up another question.
I just have one question. Under judiciary, who's salaries?
Sure, let me pull up. So the judiciary, the salary line item is for one employee. That's Natalie Benway. He's the clerk in the police department who handles the municipal court. And then all of those that fall under that are her. And then you get to the municipal court judge, Ray Cooney. Housing court is Bob McConnell. And corporate court is Bruce Sawyer.
And he's full-time?
She's full-time.
She's on Netflix tickets, though.
Anyone else? Thank you so much.
I'm so glad you said no more questions.
I did. You brought up another question.
So that's my last question, I promise. So under this budget that I'm looking at, it's still different from this one. So this says that under legal contingencies that we budgeted $113,000. We spent $72,000. There's $20,000 left over. For this year's budget, we're only budgeting $15,000. So is that like, is that a mistake or...? Because this budget is now, it's not the same as this one under legal contingencies.
So what... Yeah, well, yeah, because a lot of... So what also was in there outside of that... Sorry. To Matt's consternation, I would hit that line with the bankruptcy attorney that obviously is no longer valid. So all matters where I needed assistance, I would... We have a bank, there was a bankruptcy attorney at my discretion. And that's where it always set the legal contingency line since 2013. And it's been less and less every year. And obviously, it's no longer there now.
But it's in here, department staff, bankruptcy counsel, labor relations, housing.
Well, if there's still, there's still like, obviously, the state fight of the $3 million. Right now, we do that through Matt. We don't talk to the bankruptcy attorney any longer. But it's still a function of the legal department. So it's sort of now that the statute's over, it falls under his...
So can this be updated with those, with that number? Because that is the actual, the 113,000 that we budgeted for.
Last year.
Right, but this has adopted $17,000 on here.
Okay.
Right, so it needs to be updated?
I will look into that. I don't know why the difference is. I'll make sure it's fixed.
Thank you.
Can I ask where that paperwork is?
This page is page six. And then this is the monthly budget we get.
Okay.
Mr. Luther?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
What was his last question?
Well, it wasn't, but then he raised another one. So I won't keep you long on this. I asked a question earlier, Matt. You mentioned that you are going into contract. My question is, as the legal counsel to the city, presently, the finance director stated that we have no existing... Could you tell us what employees in the city who are contracted do not have existing contracts or who have expired, their contracts have expired and have not been issued a new contract?
What does that do with the budget?
It's all negotiations it's gonna cost down in time.
Councilman, I don't have a ready list like that. But I could certainly inquire and try to figure out if there are specific contractors you want me to look for. I can do some due diligence on that.
Contractual employees, yes.
So if I could add a little, the word contractor on the head con ordinance? So Matthew, the tax assessor, HR director. The word contractor, I believe, is after each one. Those are the departments that have that, the number.
Are they under existing contract? Or will they serve at the pleasure at this point?
They are contractors, so they have a contract.
You mentioned earlier that the police chief and the fire chief tune in their contracts.
And they're not, the word contractor is down next to their name.
So they're not a city employee?
Well, I would clarify that the lawyers have engagement letters, which provide for termination at any time by the city. So to the extent that, I don't want to characterize it as a contract that's binding the city. The city can fire any lawyer at any time for any reason. There's no just cause of private...
I refer to other departments.
And that's the same, that's the same permit, right?
Councilor?
Counselor, let me sneak a legal question into a budget question. You mentioned that you won't build the city for more time than X amount of hours. You're representing the city in a lawsuit against the federal government based on the census question. My assumption is in this case, one clarification. One, that you're not gonna build us more than what, even though it's gonna take you more work, presumably. Thank you for going to New York and fighting that case. And two, the lawsuit would apply to the 2020 census. So what is your legal advice regarding the test that's taking place with data that they will use? Because this is supposedly the first test administration where they're gonna release the data.
The answer to the first part of your question is all the law department lawyers that are engaged, and I make them put this in their engagement letter. I create caps. So you're gonna approve $22,000 for Nick Heeman. If he builds, sends me a bill over that amount, I won't approve it. Lisette Gomes sends me a bill over that amount, I won't approve it. And that's because a lot of times lawyers get approved to certain rates and then they bill above that. It's kind of a sneaky way to bill more money. And I wanted to prevent that from happening. So on all law department bills, you'll see a billed amount and then there'll be a discount. The discount will go back to what they're allowed to bill. So I'll bill, you know, X amount and subtract what I committed not to bill. The answer to your question on the census is that the pre-trial documents happened two weeks ago in front of the judge. And I think we'll have a decision by late summer. And so really, the question is whether the federal court will enjoin the census from, with the question of the test. Whether they do or they don't, it'll get appealed to the Second Circuit and then it'll get appealed to the Supreme Court. The effect of it will be, it's either gonna be on the census or it won't be. It's not on the test that everyone has received in recent weeks. And that's really a large part of the lawsuit is that sociologists across America are saying, "You're doing the test to see if it's actually gonna work. And if a major question is not on the test, the test is invalid." And so that's a large argument we're making and part of the lawsuit.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Matt. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last, at least, I think it's fine to answer.
Mr. Chairman?
Don't tell me any other reasons.
Mr. Chairman, it depends on how long we need to stay here. I would ask that there are other things I need to look at. And I would like to recommend, if it's possible, to defer the finance director to the end of the departments so we have a better understanding of the other departments and address finance last.
Can I make a suggestion?
Maybe not. He's been here all night, Tom. I don't think it's...
He's been here every night. Unfortunately.
I mean, I think I could do my groups that is, you know, smaller circle. But then, obviously, I know you may have other, like, bigger city financial revenue. We could do that after Wednesday at the end. I don't mind, you know, I don't mind. But I think it's, I think internally, just for the two groups, finance and tax assessor, I think it's prudent just to, I mean, to talk about that. I think that's 15, 20 minutes and it's bigger stuff.
So we're sticking just to this finance section and tax assessor potential?
Yeah, that is...
And then you will look at the revenue and all that?
Yeah, you know, unless you finish, you know...
I'm only trying to ask for like to get home early. There's a great deal of discussions in finance.
And my fans, you did ask a dozen questions.
So good evening, councilmembers.
Let's tell them what we're doing. We're doing tax assessor right down through finance. So to do...
Yes, so I'm the acting director of finance, Leonard Morgana. Good evening, councilmembers. As you know, 2018 was a challenging year. My presentation in February showed essentially what ended up being documented in the audit. I like to think that I was very proactive in seeing those things in November and bringing folks on board with assistance through the state with FIPAC. And with the auditors' assistance, again, even better than myself. Markham probably understands the GL and our shortcomings of reporting better than anybody in the city. They've been the most consistent. We've had multiple finance directors, but Markham has been on audit since pre-bankruptcy, during the bankruptcy. So getting their assistance has been vital. Obviously, the goals are to eliminate all the issues that we had in 2018. And we're working through those now. We already have implemented efficiency projects and little modules to make things faster and easier to get into the GL, get things posted so we can have reporting faster. We have check scanning capabilities so we can go right from the window to deposit and the checks can get deposited right to the bank from a check scanner, saving lots of time in terms of... Believe it or not, we have the photocopy of the check. The photocopy only fits three checks. And when it's tax collection week, we probably get about, I don't know, thousands of checks. So literally half hour sitting there making copies of checks every day. Very time-consuming. So obviously, again, the goals, the goals in a few months, hopefully two months, come to the council, give an update of where finance is in terms of, you know, what we've seen since December and January, what's been, what's working, what isn't working. I'd like to actually bring FIPAC and Markham here to answer questions from you guys. We're passing, just to be transparent. You know, again, the goal is, at some point in the near future, meaning during this fiscal year, hopefully by December, is to have some type of portal online where residents, constituents of the city, anyone on the internet can see every line item. It'll be live, by department, that's the goal. And we're working towards that every day. FIPAC and Markham, they're here almost every day sitting with my team and working through any of the issues that happened in the past. One of the significant ones, obviously, single point of failure. One of the things we've done already is document every task that every clerk does and make sure that we have a cross-training mechanism for each one of those. So right now, we documented all the tasks. And now the next step through their help is to come up with a training program. And that's why you see, one of the two lines besides professional services is education and training that's slightly moved up in finance. Because there's gonna be a lot of training. The folks down there have been here a long time. And a lot of stuff is to, you know, melt some iron. And so I'm ready to answer any questions regarding tax assessor and finance.
I got seven. I'll shoot you three and then hit you. And then answer the other round.
Hopefully, I can answer all of them.
The first one is, last year, in our budget, when we looked at salaries for the department heads, we had a salary that was $10,000 less than what we're budgeting for this year's salary. If you could speak to that. The second is, I was looking over the capital improvement fund.
Wait, can I point and order? I thought we were just focusing on these two separately, not capital improvement, not salary. But we...
Well, if it's salary, it's not finance. I'd be glad to answer that.
Just finance and tax assess. All right, so we'll stick to the $10 for the director. $10,000 difference in the salaries. The capital, so what do you want to do with the capital account?
I have a.
Should we talk about that at the end of the meeting?
It's a whole separate issue.
What are you talking about?
Capital improvement, this one.
What do you want, she you're working off of, you know?
Capital improvement fund.
Well, I thought we just, tax assessor and finance, we're going to go right down the page.
So when are we going to talk about the capital improvement fund?
We can do that Wednesday.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lozier.
Mr. Chairman, as I mentioned earlier, the finance, the two people who are the key integral people of the budget is the mayor and the finance director. This is the mayor's budget, and everything hinges also on finances. That's why I suggested that the finance director or the acting finance director is involved in all aspects of your budget. We are looking at the, he's discussing the finance and the tax assessor, the operational budget. But we still have to review all the submitted ordinances by the mayor and the financial impact on the capital project funds, the program, and everything else.
That's the part I told you to do Wednesday.
That's we said that.
That's why I'm asking. That's why I'm asking that we can preliminary review things. But the finance director, we should listen and have him appear at the end to tie all the.
So I'd like to change to the councilman, ask a question. So obviously, you know, it's the elephant in the room. So, so prior to this budget, my salary, 50% of it, was in the executive line. So in the executive budget, there's a savings of well over 40 something grand. That's because I am no longer in there. In the FY19 budget, I am in the finance line, in the finance bucket. And that group is going up 38 grand. So it's a net positive from the move. The other increases, it's actually smaller if you take out the professional services and the training, the seven and the six grand. Yes, there is a difference between the 85 and the 95. Previous directors, back a few years ago, the director's salary was in the mid 90s. Then the finance director left, and I promoted the deputy finance director. And at that point, I think that level was as close to where it is now in the 60s. And I wasn't going to increase them all the way, you know, 30 grand in a promotion. So that's brought down the salary, and that's when the salary started going down a little lower. When Cynthia left, she was almost 90 grand. I think it was 89 and change, but I could wear it by that.
It was 85 is what we had in the budget.
That was in the budget last year, but that was because we knew she was leaving. It was actually, it looked like a little low. Her salary in the 17 budget was higher than that. And again, at the time, there was no decision whether I was going to be appointed by the mayor or not.
The reserve item on the budget, where do you want to put that under?
So I could talk to that, to stay.
So that's disappeared, right?
Right. To live up to the challenge that you presented to the mayor about a zero budget, it was impossible to do to leave an appropriate line item of reserve. However, there was a slight change where a small number was remaining. And we didn't, I did want to leave a line item for a minor number. And that got added to the very top negative line. So if you look at the negative line of revenue, it's usually 1%, which is like a 14 million. 1% is 140 something grand. So there was 10 grand, I believe, or 11 grand remaining in the reserve. I couldn't justify that, because if you asked what that's for, it was just a balancing act of, that's where I was going to put it, to be, I'm very transparent.
Right, so just for clarification, on the first page, on the revenue side of the budget, this emergency reserve fund of 11, 855 is the leftover from getting rid of the total reserve.
Correct, right.
All right.
Correct.
Is that your three?
You go.
Hi, Len.
Counselor Mahalia.
All right, I'm just sticking to these. So you're going to be.
I know it's hard.
Yeah, so for the audit. Is that going to be enough for the 75?
Yes, we obviously know that this year's audit was very expensive. And in that line also is the professional services that has been helpful, that's been used to help, you know, third-party stuff with FIPAC and.
That's the 60,000?
Yes.
That's the 60,000, actually.
And we're putting out the bid in the new audit. And those are the, that's around the framework that the state auditor suggested that we should see in our bids. Obviously, with the improvements we're going to make, I am, I am very focused on making sure that that does not, that does not happen again. And we won't see a number like that again.
Will you cover, will you cover other city government? Is that going to?
Yes, we could talk, I could.
No, no, we don't talk about it now.
We could talk about that Wednesday, but I mean, that's, essentially, what we've been seeing is, through every year since the bankruptcy, a lower and lower participation rate. Prior to the bankruptcy, all the retirees were paid at 100%. Not paid, I'm sorry. They were given medical benefits at 100%. Through the years, we've seen less and less utilization of that because of the expense, which is everyone that other the city lives under now the plan, which is 20%. You know, co-pay, stuff like that. So they get the same, they have the same medical plan that the city employees have. And that's very expensive when you were paying nothing before. So we've seen a massive drop off on usage of that.
The only thing I have is, I guess, you had a question one day, we had talked. Someone asked a question of you. You had a question about postage. I think Lenny would can tell you that postage is not cheap.
Yeah, no.
If you want to address, maybe you might ask.
Yeah, it's historically in the 20s, between, you know, the bills, the tax sale. There's a lot of notifications that happen with the tax sale. We have to notify, we have to certify 45, there's a 90-day letter, there's a 45-day letter. So that happens a lot.
Thank you.
Yes, Alan.
Hi, good evening, councilman.
So your total finance volume would be 579,000 and 16, right?
Yes.
With an increase of the $8,000, 144.
Yes.
Could you explain a little bit how you utilize that, why the change?
Yep, so, so like I said, the majority of that change is, comes from the savings in the executive bucket. I think the biggest things to note is the increase in, sorry, my glasses are really dirty. The increase in the auditing estimate based on what we think the bid's going to come in at. And the increase in other professional services for the assistance we're getting from the marketing consulting arm and FIPAC. And then obviously, there's to 2 grand. We have a lot of training, obviously, based on all those changes. We have to basically reset the wheel with a couple of folks, because they've been doing bids a certain way for so long. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to try to keep my questions to the assessor and the finance budget, because I have other questions on the budget itself. Thank you for your columns. I would only ask that you add one more between the fiscal year 18 adopted and the proposed 19.
I know what you can ask.
That we have April 30.
It was, I can't, so we're at, the reason why I sent the supplemental material is because I had to make a choice. And unfortunately, the way the format of that book works, I couldn't fit another one in there. I could lose one and put one in its place, if you like. But I don't know if it'll be April 30. It certainly will be by Wednesday. I think April 30, expenses will be part of the next council meeting, but that's what we can have before that.
We're not going to finish by Wednesday, so if we can get it. We're not going to finish the entire budget by Wednesday. So if we can't get another column with the current year, April 30, at least. We didn't get it last year, and it was difficult to understand where we are in what we're budgeting. We don't know.
If I could ask, if I could just do that as a supplemental, because the more we change this, the more I'm going to have to do substitute A for January, for June 5. So I mean, I don't know what, at this point, we already have something set up. So now I'm changing it again.
My only recommendation would then.
A little forward, trying to have that, because it is, it is helpful. So what I have to do, I have to keep referring back to this thing, and that's how I know.
You're right. And in a normal world, I would consider it very helpful. The problem where it's not is where choices were made because of the fiscal stability that causes these one-offs, where trends become difficult to see, because there's these one-offs decided in one year that's not in any other year. So sometimes that causes even more questions and confusion than not seeing that.
Mr. Moganis, may I make a suggestion then? To eliminate the fiscal year 17 variance, move the adopted over and then add fiscal year 18, April 30.
That's up to the council. I'm not.
The variance.
No, that's the only audit I saw that we.
No, you mentioned the audit.
No, I understand.
Let's say I have a particular.
You know what, let me take it under, let me see what I can do with the sheet and the book, and I'll come back to you Wednesday.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
We're going to keep going around there. I got a lot of questions.
Just on no student.
I'm sorry.
For the collection agency?
Yes. It was Rossi, and I'll have to get the name, because I think we recently changed that. I have to get that. I don't have to tell, I mean, it changed it right before I was named, but I just can't remember it right now. I'll have to get to you. We weren't using Rossi.
Yeah, it was.
It may even still be. I thought we talked about changing it.
I think you want to cancel, right?
Yeah. I'll confirm if it's not Rossi. I believe it's still Rossi, but I.
Oh, one is Rossi.
Also, if we, right, if we feel that legal means of, we've exhausted other means, and then we send it to them, and then they get a piece, and then we get the rest, that's 75%. They usually keep a quarter percent, I mean, 25% of it. So it's anything we feel we can't collect that's over, or if it's older than 10 years, stuff like that. This has been going down more because of, we've been taking advantage of the state's big contacts. I forgot the official name of our program, but that's been very productive. Counselor, my question.
So related to the tax assessor and to actually an increase somewhere else. We talked about, you have here that realty stamps and real estate recordings are going to jump up. The assumption there being, it's because we're selling more homes in the city. And I wanted to give you this question earlier, right? So the two ways in which tax revenue would increase would be, one, by increasing the tax rate. If the value of the actual property goes up everywhere in the city and the tax rate stays the same, we still have a larger revenue, because we're taking a percentage out of a bigger chunk. Is there any way to predict what the trend is going to be next year and the year after? So that instead of only ever talking about an increase in the tax rate, we also factor in an increase in, or a decrease in the property value?
Well, for sure, the property values are increasing. The reval's next year, and we're already seeing 100, 200% increases in value in some properties. It's out of, it's something we haven't seen in central halls as long as I've been here. The last revale was not that high. We're seeing really big jumps.
How often are the reval's?
Every three years, by the way.
So this coming year, we got.
Right, so December, this December, it'll be revaled, it'll be part of next year's tax roll. The rates will be significantly different next year.
Got it.
Right, so if values go up, the rate will go down and maintain the same revenue. It's one plus one equals two. So if the assessed value doubles, the rate will be down to maintain the same 14 million.
For this budget?
Next budget.
Why?
Because it's December, it's next year's tax roll. It's the property of the values based on December 20, 31st. So the 19, the FY20 tax roll in calendar 19 is based on the December 31st, 18 assessed value and ownership record, I guess you could say. So we're, I mean, less, less of the changes in less than a year, which I doubt seriously, the values are going up across the board. That's what we're seeing.
Okay, so talking about the values. So I hope the taxes are not going to go up. That's going to, right, the value for the property is going to up, right?
I don't know, depending on words, you'll go, councilman. I don't know.
Yeah, but we, maybe resolution or something, so. Go up in the 20s.
You can't pay the resolution to say the taxes.
We can do any of all that.
But, I mean, obviously. I'm not going to speculate. The councilman.
Quick question. So the reval services.
Yes.
Nobody asked, Eric. The 25, that's at the end?
Yeah, so it's an estimate that, so they pay a portion. They pay anywhere between 75 and 80%. So it's one of those, we get invoiced, we pay, and then within a week, they reimburse. So that's the net.
And then for tax assessor, the other professional, the 60, what is that for?
That's Bob Batty. Most of that's Bob Batty.
And then so salaries is just the clerks?
Oh, I'm sorry. There's one clerk, Carolina.
Okay.
Loggus, yes. And it's less, the reason why those are positive is because she replaced a long-term employee that retired, Ellen Durenzo, and she was at a higher step in the union. So Carolina came in, CF resident, great hire, great worker. I wish I had five of them.
So in terms of, I'm going back to compensated, absences and HRA. So those get paid out at the end, correct?
Yeah, well, the, that's what we're seeing with the HRA. Again, a lot of that is, is based on a calendar that we don't control, yes, so.
The HRA?
Yes, right.
But when did I spend that, 100,000?
We may not. I don't, I don't, I don't have insight to what the claim, claims have right now in terms of retirees versus active trustees. I could, I could see what that is and get an estimate.
But then we're budgeting 75 for next year.
Well, then, like I said, the trends have been lower.
Can I ask where you're, where you're referring to? Any finance on budget?
No, last page is the other city government, it's called. And it's, there's line items for.
I thought we're only discussing the finance and the tax assessor ones.
I let her ask me that question. I'm sorry. I gave her.
You asked a million questions that didn't present.
I got a million more.
Well, back to the, so we had a tax, I collected a, they get, the agency, the collection agent, they get a percentage of what they collect, or that we just give them a flat fee?
Oh, no, we don't pay anything. If they collect something, I believe it's 25%. That's a standard, that's a standard fee that they all charge, and then we get 75%.
Okay, thank you.
Like I said, that's been happening less and less.
Good, thank you.
On the tax assessor, reevaluation tax assessor, which is not, there was nothing on the budget for the year 17, but there was 25,000 in the year 18, and another, supposed 25,000 for this year.
Right, so the reval's only three years, but it, because of the calendar year hits to fiscal year, the work of the reval starts now, which is this current year. So we charges this year, then we charges next year, and then we have reimbursed. That's why that's there. Who's there, councilman?
Could you, for the education of the council, you mentioned the revaluation. There is two parts of the revaluation. One is the statistical. One is the statistical update, which I considered. This is the statistical update that is taking place December thirty-first? Or is it a full door-to-door revaluation?
Full reval, I believe.
So this coming is a fifty thousand dollar expense, twenty-five in both years, for the entire full door-to-door revaluation?
Again, that's an estimate, that, until they know how many properties and they work, and how many they can sample, because they go on site. Sometimes they, they send them more expensive or more costly. It depends on the level of person that goes, if there's a questionable property. So we, we always budget fifty grand, twenty-five each year during the reval. And sometimes there's some, some minor benefit there, where only, last time, I think it was only like four grand. It's not that hugely big of a difference.
So according to state law, as Councilman, Councilman Acosta mentioned earlier, there used to be a ten-year revaluation. Now that just changed it to a statistical, happens at every three years, and a four on every. Do you have that breakdown?
I, I'll have to get that from Mr. Vadya, I'm gonna have to tell for my head. I'm writing it down right now.
Maria. Go on, again. Yugo. Charlie. Trey.
Mr. Chairman. The, you mentioned earlier that the auditing for this current year was an expensive one. And it was budgeted for sixty-eight thousand. But you increased the line item from nineteen to seventy-five thousand.
Yes.
I got stuck with that.
Yeah, I know, I just wanna get a better understanding of if this year was a more difficult one, do you expect next year to be even more difficult than this year?
I hope I'm not here if that's the case. I don't wanna go through another year like that. Obviously, I don't, unless I went to budget it that way, councilman, I, I. So the, the estimate from there is, since we don't know what, we don't have the bid out yet. We don't, we, what I, what, what's common is that you get, you get information from the order to general's office of what they're seeing for other cities that are bidding out. And again, my goal is to have a, have, have one that ends in twelve, thirteen, one like it's supposed to for the first time in years.
And what is done?
That's, that's it.
That's all the questions I have on these accounts.
Don't worry.
When I have other questions on the finance. I also request a copy of the budget, which I haven't received yet.
I do not, I do not get that out. I give it to the.
I have not received it. Please, may I get a copy?
I'm going up, all the way there.
I don't have one time yet. One time, good for you, bye-bye. Next day. See you on Wednesday.